Regular meeting of the Rock Ridge School Board to order. Binder labeled public copy of board materials is at the table on the beginning of there. Enter the room. Meeting agendas are also available for public on RRPS.org on the board book. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call. Brandy, Erica Liger is not here. She has a work obligation she could not attend. And Nicole and Cody Wester are not here. So it's just the four of us. Go with it, I guess, huh? Can I get an approval, motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ritten.
Second.
Second by Westby. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Visitor input. Anybody here want to speak? Okay. Moving along, consent agenda. There is one correction. Four, under four point one six. Courtney Baker should be a point zero eight, not a point eight. Please, I missed a zero in there. With that correction, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Bonner.
Support.
Or by Ritten. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Five point one, snow removal for the winter twenty-five, twenty-six and turf field maintenance. Thank you all.
Mike, evening. I'm here to talk about snow plowing first. We're going to go for bids this year. We're going to put it out in the local papers. We're going to do it in two different groups. This complex here, and then also we have the park view, that is the parking lot, the bus lane, and basically two parking lots at the North Star. Other than that, our maintenance staff takes care of the rest. Here is the one that people don't realize what we, what happens here is we plow all the way from Borgon Road, all through the ball fields, all the roads, to the corner down there, then up the hill, all the way to the Laurentian and around and back. So this is a pretty big deal. So that's why I don't go out every year with bids, because when somebody puts a bid on it, they're making a commitment to buying equipment, they're doing everything out. I mean, it's only fair that you give them a chance to, to do their snow. So I'm going to put that out probably in the next, I will say maybe by Friday it'll be done and going out, and then I'll expect them to answer. And then I'm going to put my contact in there, so anybody that has any questions, if they want to come up and do a walk around, I'll show them exactly what we're talking about, so they can make an accurate guess. And that's about it for the snow plow.
Can I ask a question? Are these, when, when we hire, is it like a yearly thing or a per plow thing?
It's yearly.
Okay.
Who did before, Mike?
USA, they're right down at the bottom of the hill here.
Okay.
And they're contractors and they have all the equipment, so it was nice to be right here. And then Larry Surla did the Virginia in town.
Okay.
So, and of course, they all have to have their insurance, have to be bonded, all the stuff that makes it so they can be here.
Sure.
And last time we set this out, weren't they the only bidder, USA?
They're the only bidder. And I think a lot of it is people don't realize that you're plowing roads too. So you've got to have some big stuff.
Yeah.
And it's nice, it was nice for them, because they're right there and they take their stuff home with them.
Yeah, super convenient.
Up here in our parking lot. But anyway, we'll see what happens. We'll see what we get.
Sure.
The second thing, I want to talk about field maintenance. You know, we've been running for a few years, and our staff we have, which, we got a few, a few people. We do have equipment, but we don't have the manpower to do everything that it needs to do. What I would like to do, and that's why I'm here, I want to see what you, what you people think. Get on, like, once a year, depending on the field, depending on the use, getting a company, like a company that built the fields, or a company that just came up and trained us, and showed us how to take care of these fields, so they could come up once a year, kind of go through it with us, kind of get us good, and then we can maintain from there. Because they take a beating, we plow them, we blow the beads in the woods, we're trying to get them back in there. It's a thing. So if we had the professional people that do it all the time come, I think it would really add life to our fields, because otherwise I'm worried that in a few more years, we're going to be like, oh, we got to repair this, or we got to replace this, and...
So like a yearly maintenance?
Yeah, but it, it's hard to put that in words, because some fields are used a lot more than others. Like the football field right now, we've never plowed it, never done anything. We just had it tested for concussions. It's fine. It's, we just sweep it, we run through and do our little rake and fluff it up so it looks nice, and it's good to go. So that one probably wouldn't be that big a deal. It's the varsity baseball and the varsity softball that gets the majority of the use. And it would be good, I think it's, it's good for us as a district to have a little bit of a, and make you feel better too, that it's happening. At least we're getting a good start every year.
I think it's a great idea, especially to, like you said, are we doing it properly, right to the nth degree? And this might add a little life to it, and, I mean, you're going to go out and ask for proposals, right? And it, to me, it's, that's worth it, especially since we don't have the manpower.
You know, at least you find out what it would cost.
Yeah.
Just a little story, I'll tell you quick. We had them down for training, and they were showing us on the pitcher's mound down on the varsity baseball. And I had, basically, it was in the summer, we had almost a whole maintenance staff there. And he goes, okay, so which one of your fields, which one of you guys work on this field, and what, who's on that field then? And we're going, no, no, we got these couple here. Everyone else are custodians in the building, but we want them all to know, so at times we can pull the troops down and take care of what we got to. Or when people bid on jobs, they kind of have seen it. They were shocked that we're living with what we're living with.
That we didn't have a dedicated crew.
But there's the money. You know, so, but I think with having this, at least we get a good start every year. And then it's up to us to do our best to keep them good.
So would you want somebody, like every spring, to do this, or?
Well, I'm doing a little thing to see if it's better to do it in the fall or do it in the spring.
Sure.
Because I'm worried about if we do it in the fall, then of course we get a lot of snow. We're trying to get the fields ready, so we go right away in the spring, so we're removing snow. I don't want to lose all the beads inside and go, oh, boy, that was smart. So, but I'll find that out. I'll put something together and I'll come back and show you what I came up with.
Do you, do you not do the football field? You don't plow the fo, you don't do anything with that? You let the snow just go away natural?
I mean, unless we got a lot of snow now.
Right.
We'd have to plow for homecoming, but...
So that's probably part of the reason why it's in good shape then, right?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? Yeah, okay.
And believe it or not, the football turf is different than the baseball. I, at first I didn't realize that either. Yeah, the football is a little longer, it's a little thicker. So I suppose that's because you're getting tackled on it and whatever else.
Yeah.
But I just think it'd be good to find some numbers, see what we're looking at, then go from there.
Like protect our investment, you know, we have a lot of money on that term.
It's a big investment.
Yeah.
So.
Do we need to make a motion, or?
No, no, he's, he's...
I just wanted you to know what I was doing.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
I just thought it's time.
And you're just checking into numbers right now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll bring them back to you, and I guess then, and see what if it works or what.
You still have a good inventory of those rubber, rubber pellets?
Rubber pellets, yes, but no sand. We burn through, you know them big bags of sand? Got pretty much all of them. It's amazing what you put on there.
Oh, wow.
You start to wonder where's it all going? You know, but, yeah, he was putting five gallon pails just on third base, which you don't even slide that much on third base.
Yeah.
Probably eight pails.
Really?
And that one time he was showing us, he goes, okay, now it's back to what it should be. And I'm like, oh my god. So.
Lot of sand in the tennis shoes.
Yeah, and it has to be special sand, but I found out you can buy it cheap at Menards. So, yeah, it works, so.
Any good punch?
Eleven percent off.
Sounds good, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, moving along, five point two, Rock Ridge High School Principal's report. Mr. Manning.
All right, and happy school board appreciation month from Rock Ridge High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing I'd like to do is thank the Rock Ridge High School staff for welcoming me and for their hard work and dedication. And the second one is the Rock Ridge High School students. We've had an amazing first month of school. So their behavior has been top notch this last month. So it's very impressed. I know we need a couple of school board reps, so we're going to kind of follow that same process that we have in the past, so we can get juniors and senior reps.
Great.
And then one of the things we talked about as a staff is aligning the dominoes. Because most people in life put the dominoes this way and then knock down one at a time. Well, we want to put the dominoes in order, so it builds momentum. So one of the things is our pass system, which is working very well. And North Star Elementary is doing the same one, so we're creating that same common language as they come to the high school. And then the yellow line for the busing too. It's, it's that way in all the buildings now, so that students know they don't go on the other side of the yellow line until the bus door is open. So we're creating systems that we don't have to retrain students, that they'll learn from early on when they get older. And then some of the highlights we've had, our culinary program did an amazing job at the Rotary Chili Feed. And rumor has it, we missed it by one point, but that's okay. They did a great job. Our building and construction class met with Yulin Brothers about the roundabout and Highway fifty-three and heavy equipment. Our eighth grade science class, I was in there today, they were doing a shark tank, so they were presenting their ideas. So that was quite impressive. Our medical students, they organized the blood drive, which was today. And then our boblock, I don't know if you know about that, but all of our students did all of the engineering fabrication, and it's all behind the high school now, and they'll be starting looking at installing it in the next few weeks before the snow flies. So that'll all be done. That's all student done. Those homecoming t-shirts, those are a hundred percent designed and made by all the students. So just kind of, kind of that. We have homecoming week this week. Just so you know, we have aligned it, so we have home competitions in tennis, volleyball, cross country, swimming and football. All this week, and junior high sports are at home this week too. So it's going to be a very busy week at Rock Ridge. We have the parade on Friday, and this year we're inviting the elementary students to the parade. So we're making it a big deal, so we're going to have them along our parade route, so they can cheer and celebrate some Wolverine spirit for homecoming week.
Super.
And kind of we talk about it. It's, it's our school, our responsibility. At the high school, we're living it right now. And I can't be prouder of our students and our staff on how they performed this last month.
Great.
Any questions from the high school?
No. No. Great stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Sounds good.
Five point three, superintendent report. Dr. Schmidt.
Thank you, Director Yuhan. I have four things to update the board on. First, a simple one. You've probably noticed if you've driven on Borgon Road past the JV baseball field, there's a new sidewalk there. And it looks like they suddenly stopped working on the sidewalk. It's not finished the last third. Well, they did that because they have heavy equipment in the area, so they didn't want to finish the sidewalk and have it crack. So just, you know, the rest of the sidewalk will be done by them when they're done working in that area, and they got some of the bigger equipment out of the area. Second thing is you have a book in front of you, the strengths finder book. This is part of the superintendent's goals. So you get to do what the entire admin team got to do, and they're back there laughing already and smiling, because they've gone through this. And so what this is, all you have to do is just go to the back of the book. There's a code, put it in, take the twenty minute test, and then let me know you're done, and then we'll meet and go over it. What does it mean? And the whole purpose of this is to, if you know what other people are really good at, it works better in the group setting, then you understand the viewpoint where someone is coming from. And it does help groups work to, like a school board or like the admin team. If you know what another person's strengths are, not their weaknesses, we don't care about those, because the strengths are the really important ones, and we'll talk about that. So just take the test, let me know, and then we'll talk about it.
Sounds good.
It'll be fun. The second one is that, just so you know, Mike and I met with all twenty-four custodians, there's really twenty-six custodians, but we met with twenty-four. Two of them are just beginning. And to, I wanted to get an idea about what they did, what their perception was of the job, any recommendations or suggestions that they wanted to have. So met with all twenty-four of them, and Mike and I will sit and talk down some more about them as far as do we have the duties right, who's doing what, how that's working, grounds versus custodian drivers. So we'll be talking more about that internally. But just so you know, we're, we know, we believe there's a better way to do this. So we're working, the custodians were great to talk to too. And they told me what, I learned a lot from listening to them. So I just want to let you know about that. The last thing is, and this one will take a little bit longer, I gave you a sheet that says rough drafts, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five at the top. We've talked about this a couple of times at board meetings, but very briefly. The topic, it originally started with, should we, when we were doing some budget issues last spring, some individual said, hey, maybe we should take a look at asking the voters for more money. That's how this started. And so we slowed that down and didn't really do anything with it at that point. So, but along with that, so what I have in front of us, and this is something for you to think about. You don't have to tell me green light, but if you want to do this, I mean, sometime in the next month, we should, you should let me know what you're thinking. And so the whole purpose is, I think it's more than just simply asking the community, do you want to further financially support the schools? So it would be really good to find out a couple things. And I think there's three big questions to find out what people are really thinking. And I know you get feedback from individuals and people are telling you what they think about this, that, or the other thing. But the hardest thing to find out is what are most people really thinking? We know what the people who have know, they enjoy telling you their opinion, and they're maybe loud in telling you their opinion. We know what they think. But what are the other hundred people who aren't talking? What are they thinking? So we need to find out what they're thinking. At least I think it'd be useful for you. So I think there's three things to be looking at, and if you said, yes, we want to do this, then I'd work towards and you'd be with me about what this might look like, so you knew exactly what was going to happen at these community meetings. Three questions are, I think we should ask the public, since the consolidation, have we kept our promises? Is this what you thought was going to happen when you said, hey, I vote yes for this, hey, I vote yes for the consolidation? Is this about what you thought would happen as the district done what you thought they were going to do? Another one I think for us to know about is, how do they think we're doing right now? Not five years ago, not three years ago, right now. How do you think we're doing? And then another part would be, any advice you want to give to the school board? Any feedback you want to give the school board? And then what we're looking for there are clusters, are there clusters of what things that people are saying that they want you to know about that maybe we're not aware of? So the whole intent of this is to find out what people are really thinking about and what people really want to say to you. And I'm suggesting if we do this, that we do six in Gilbert, six in Elvis, six in Virginia, because everyone's very concerned about fairness. So we want to make sure we're in three different locations, and we'd probably work with the city, use the city hall or something like that. And we probably have, for example, morning, noon, and evening, and do it on two different dates. And the whole purpose of that is to have, not have a room full of a hundred people, but have a room full of like two to ten. You get way better feedback that way. And then you can talk to people individually and do it that way. Because if you get a hundred fifty people in a room, it's really hard to find out what the whole room is thinking. So in addition to that, so if you said yes to that, we would start with to hear some information from the school district for you to know, and then we ask questions and get feedback from them. And then in addition to the community meetings, we'd probably do some meetings, and we've done this before, with various civic, Laurentian Chamber of Commerce, Lions Club, for example, Rotary. Go in and ask them, what do you think? What are you thinking about what's happening? We had feedback from them, from a variety of different groups we'd get feedback from. And this could be even city councils. What do you think is going on? And then they could tell us. And then all this feedback would come back to you, and by the time this was all done, it's probably about January, because this is going to take some time to do, and we want to make sure the public knows about it. And then what I'm suggesting is that, once you get that feedback, is that we create a survey. We've done this before. The old Virginia district did it, and then the Elvis Gilbert and the Virginia district did it together to do a survey to find out what people really thought about the possibility of cooperatively working together. And we sent that survey to everyone in the district. And I mean, everyone who lived within the boundaries, whether they were a taxpayer or a non-taxpayer. Staff took it, everyone took the survey, and we got about twenty percent back. And the school board at that time learned a lot from what the community really was thinking. So the whole purpose of this is to get past the people who are talking the loudest, and to find out what most people are really thinking. And that also, if you decide to do something with that, and you start thinking about, well, maybe we should go ask the voters, you're going to know from that survey what they're really thinking, and you'll also know what they're willing to support. Okay, I, I, I can go along with supporting you to this level, or maybe this level. Uh-uh, no, I don't support you out over here. And that's valuable information to school boards to know before you make a decision on what, if anything, you want to do with anything further down the road. And you probably, for example, every once in a while, a school will put something on to the voters, and it does poorly, like eighty percent of the voters might say no. Well, that really is because, my opinion, the school board probably didn't do a very good job of talking to their voters and getting feedback from them, and finding out what they really were thinking and what they really would or wouldn't support. You want to know before you even make a decision to do anything like that. And it was useful for board in the past. So if you just tell me, yes, you want to go there, this is kind of a sketch of what might happen and how the process might play out. And of course, these dates can be changed, things can be altered. You can tell me you want to have a work-study session to talk about this some more, or you can say, hey, this looks pretty good, let's move forward with it, and let's see what the first round of community feedback is. You can think about it for a while, and we can talk about it at another school board meeting. It's just, I'm just simply saying this is one thing you could do, if you want to really find out what the public is thinking.
And it will cost nothing, because the buildings we would be able to set up.
It would cost nothing until the survey.
Correct, okay.
Yep. Then it's just time, but it wouldn't cost you anything.
Yeah.
I, I think it's a great idea, because we, it also educates the public. And with funding being taken away from schools, not only by the state, but by the feds, and then the unfunded mandates, I don't think people really realize that we're behind the eight ball, as much, not because of anything that we've done wrong, but we're just underfunded.
Yeah, I'm totally for this. But I wouldn't mind talking at a work-study session about this with the other three board members too. But no, I think it's great to be open and honest and, and get, get, get the feedback. And, and if there's some, you know, like, if there's some people that come that have, you know, questions or concerns, you know, we can help them with their concerns, or tell them, no, this is really happening. It's not what you're...
That's exactly what you want.
Yeah, right. So no, I'm all for this. So I'd be happy to talk about it or set up a work-study if...
And board members, you know, it would be, it'd be nice to have some at the, at the meetings, you know, just for...
Oh, for sure.
More questions and stuff.
Yes.
That'd be great.
I like the...
That's good.
Sorry, John. I like the different times too, because not only, you know, you're talking less people, but I'm thinking afternoon shift, day shift, always, you know, that's always a trouble spot. You have it at three, and all day shift misses it. So if it's varied, that's good for...
You get a variety of people attending each one.
Right, yeah. Even at seven AM, so they could come before they go to work, or something too, maybe.
Well, and just that they can...
I'll coffee for that one. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
So would you like a work-study session before the next board meeting, or just talk about it at the next board meeting, or what?
I don't see a need for a work-study session.
I don't think we need work-study. I don't even think, myself, I don't even think we have to ask the other board members about it. I think they would be in favor of it, myself.
Yeah, I mean, I'm proud of it moving forward, I mean, this one is here.
We're educating the public, we're seeing what the public actually thinks about what, they're grading us. They'll be grading us on our performance for the last three or four years.
Of course they will.
Yeah. And I, I think that the three board members that are here would say, yeah, that's a good idea. If you wanted...
That's fine.
If you wanted a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion that we have you get this process in, in motion.
I'd support that.
I, I think, I don't know if you, I don't think you need a motion.
Okay.
Because this is just a superintendent's report, but I think I know what you're thinking. And so what I'll do is at the next meeting, I'll come with more detail and some additional stuff, and then you can talk about it, and then you can tell me green light, yellow light, or red light.
Okay.
Perfect. Fair enough?
Yep.
Yes.
And that's it.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I'm, no, I want to ask you one question. Now, October first is Child Count Day, or I'm not sure. Now, October 1st is Child Count Day, or I'm not sure. So at our next meeting, would you know the number so we could see what the numbers are? Or like our attendance and, you know?
You know, I don't want to steal Andrea's thunder, but she is waiting, poised back there to just briefly tell that to you.
I didn't see him back there.
She's coming up, so...
Exceeding everybody's expectations.
Yes, the new date is 15 school days. October 1st is, they don't use that anymore.
Really?
We're not to the 15th day yet. Andrea will talk to you about that when she's up during her turn.
Okay. Edge of our seats now.
Perfect. Yeah, that's it for us.
Okay, 5.4 Treasures Report, can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Westby.
Support.
Support by Ridden, any discussion? Do we say something about the questions about the Treasures Report? That if we do have questions, to email ahead of time, and a lot of times those questions never make it through.
Yeah, we can answer them. Individual board members have questions about individual, just email us or Andrea, and we'll do our best to answer the question.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Excuse me, 6.1, consider approval of proposed 25, pay 26 levy.
The drum roll.
Good evening. So you had a question about students. It's funny, Dr. Schmidt and I were talking about it earlier. So we will tomorrow, and it's the 15th day. So then all the records will start to get updated tomorrow if we had students on our roll that didn't appear. So those will be happening, and then we'll have the adjustments, and we'll know more on Wednesday and Thursday about the amounts that we have.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, good.
So we have preliminary figures, but they include students that aren't here. So we want to make sure we have a little bit better accurate figures at that point.
Sure, great, good.
So tonight, I'm here to ask the board to certify the proposed levy, the proposed pay 25, pay 26 levy at maximum. So the levy process begins in July. It starts with the levy information system, where I input some information and update our enrollments for the projected enrollments. And then it goes through a whole process. We've had a few runs already done by MDE. They're still in the process of making updates and adjustments. So that's why I'm asking for you to approve it at the proposed levy at maximum. And then we'll have the truth in taxation meeting in December. We'll have it on Monday, December 8th, at 6:00 here at the Rock Ridge Administration Building. That's right before, right during the actual board meeting that we have in December. And that is of legality, that we need to have that for our taxpayers. So if anyone has questions, then that night, I will ask you to certify the actual levy. On December 8th, you'll certify that. And the levy is for actual property taxes that are paid in 2026, and the district receives the funds for the 26, 27 year. So at this time, MDE is still making adjustments. They're making adjustments on the areas of debt, lease, and long-term maintenance. And I do have some questions for them, and I'm just waiting for some answers from them at this point. So I would just ask for you to approve it at maximum.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Motion by Ridden, second by Bonner, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Needless, huh, Andrea?
Okay, moving right along. 6.2, consider approval of letter of cooperation with Hibbing Public Schools and Rock Ridge Public Schools for the creation and operation of an area learning center. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ridden, support?
I'll support.
Support by Westby, any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering how this came about? And the ALC that we have, do we have, is it K through 12? Or what is our, the ALC ages?
Scott is already walking to the stage, because he knew this question might come up.
Okay.
Okay, kind of how it came about?
Yeah.
Historically, the consortiums, like the NLC, and there's lots of them around the state, ran all the alternative ed programming for districts. Like 916 is one in the Twin Cities, 287 is another one. Well, now districts are taking, I call it, bringing their alternative programming home. So like the NLC ran all of our ALC programming, and then they talk about targeted services, which is our elementary summer school and our after-school elementary program. Because we're leaving the NLC, we won't be using the NLC's services for alternative ed.
Okay.
So we're partnering with Hibbing to create our own ALC, because by law, we have to be with a partner district. So us and Hibbing, our partnership is, we're going to run our own programs and financially take care of our own programs. Hibbing is going to do exactly the same. And if a student meets one of the 14 qualifications to go to the program, they can choose to go to Hibbing or us.
Oh, I see.
So it's creating a win-win with Hibbing, because we're leaving the NLC. So just so the public knows, we're not creating new programming.
Right.
We're creating programming to replace what we had with the NLC, but because we're leaving, we had to do it.
Right, okay, okay, makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is K through 12, or early childhood to 12?
K through 12.
K through 12.
So there's three parts. There's the day ALC programming, which is over here right now.
Right.
Then there's the credit recovery, and that's the after-school summer programming for our 9th through 12th grade. And then our targeted services, which is our summer school and after-school programming for elementary students.
Okay.
So because you're in ALC, that means we'll be able to provide all of it in-house.
Okay.
And I'm very prideful, because I believe, as a district, we know our community and our kids better, and our teachers will be able to service it.
Sure, okay, great. From Scott.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Scott. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval of offer from City of Virginia to buy three unused school parking lots in Virginia. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ridden, support by Yohan. Any discussion?
What parking, what are the, can you tell us what they are?
There's a map of it in our packet.
Yes, there's a map. You can look at the map. The buildings at grounds talked about this earlier. And what happened is that, since the high school moved out, there's all these parking lots around North Star we don't use. If you drive by on any given time, you will see literally nothing in three of, two of the three parking lots. There's one parking lot on the south side of where the old high school used to be. It's a very narrow parking lot. If you didn't stick your head down there, you would never know it's back there. Some of the community people have their cars parked there, but that's one of the lots. We don't need it anymore, because the teachers still have parking lots, staff still have parking lots on there. And the other one is, there's a house on the corner of it, and the parking lot basically surrounds on almost three sides the house. There's two houses. We don't need that parking lot, we don't use it. I believe the City of Virginia, I don't want to speak for them, but I believe they're interested in maybe seeing if they can develop some housing on those lots. And that's why they're interested, that might be why they're interested in those lots. We have enough parking, we don't need them. Virginia's been parking on big, big, major events. Virginia's been parking on the street for 100 years, and we think it's still going to work.
Because lot one and two of those are used right now.
They're, that's where the staff are parking right now.
Right, right, yeah.
And so like when we have tournaments or anything like that over there, that we'd still be good for...
You're good.
Okay.
Yep. It's still, considering what Virginia lived through with parking for decades, they have no parking issues anymore. They're all gone, because the high school isn't there anymore. We don't need them, they would just sit there and accumulate. We've already had to tow some cars off of the lots, because people have just left them there.
And my thoughts are, when we discussed it at Buildings and Grounds, until Virginia does something with them, when, when, or whatever, if they do, they're still available for big basketball tournaments or volleyball tournaments or, you know, they're not going to fence them off and say, we can't utilize them, until they either, until they develop them. So, because right now, they're blotchy, well, you could call them blacktop, but it's pretty...
Broken up.
Pretty broken up. So they're still usable for parking.
I think it's a fair offer, too. I mean, I don't forgive it, I think it's a fair offer. And other discussions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval of memorandum of understanding between RRPS and the Virginia Police Department. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Director Westby.
Support.
Support by Ridden, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval, 6.5, consider approval of the agreement between Rock Ridge Public Schools and the City of Virginia regarding the School Resource Officer Program for the 25, 26 school year.
I make a motion.
Motion by Westby.
I'll second.
Second by Bonner, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Members of the board, can I insert one thing here, Director Yohan?
Yes.
Your local law enforcement and first responders have been outstanding to work with on this. In addition to that, we've been working with them on having some practice in one of our buildings and getting set up for that. We have a new system, I'm not going to go into details on this, but I was in a meeting where there were probably 25 different law enforcement, first responders, you name it, they were there, and talking about what would happen if there was something going to happen, who's coming, where are they going, what roads are going to be blocked up? Where are we going, where's command center? All this stuff, and we are talking with them. So they've been really good to work with, they've been excellent. I am floored at, when you see them, give them, they've been outstanding to work with. And we'll continue working with them on details. We have some other things that we need to do, because number one, above all things, we want all of our buildings safe, 100% safe. And we're going to make sure they are safe, and they've been great to work with.
Good.
Excellent. I see them every morning, patrolling the traffic. Usually one or two squads here every morning, which has been, is great, I think. Yep. Where are we at here? 6.6, consider approval of concurrent enrollment or college in the schools, contract between Rock Ridge Public Schools and Lake Superior College. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Ridden, do you support?
Second.
Second by Bonner, any discussion?
The only thing I was wondering, we just have one class right now in this, is that correct, Scott?
What's that?
Right now, for the college in the schools? We're just offering one class right now? Is that true?
No, we have many classes, like there's college in the schools, algebra, there's many classes. I can get you a full list if you want.
Oh, there is, okay, okay. I just said saw that contract, and I was thinking there was just the one. Okay, I'm wrong then. Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval of renewal of membership in the Minnesota Rural Education Association in the amount of 2,500, effective July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. Can I get a motion? So moved, motion by Ridden.
Second.
Second by Bonner, any discussion?
Just, what exactly is the benefit of this? I just want that, to have that be out.
Here's the benefit of Minnesota Rural Education Association. They've been around a long time, and for years, we belong to MRAA. Their job, they are very unique, because you belong to MSBA, and there are school board members who are representing you metro and outstate. This one is unique, because it's all outstate. They're only looking at outstate concerns, and it includes board members, admin, teachers. It's all-inclusive. It is so rare. It's the only group that includes everybody from an advocacy point of view. So they are the ones who are continually looking out for your rural interests, because the larger school districts have a different viewpoint on many things. Well, we have a different viewpoint sometimes, so sometimes we need someone to advocate just for ourselves and the small, and so they do it, they have lobbyists, they work on laws, law change. I've worked with them on a number of things over the years, they've been great to work with. We meet them.
And they have a fant, and I've never been to it, because of timing. But they also have a conference in the fall, and I think it's a day and a half. And from everybody that I've talked to, they say, go to it, because it's educational. They talk about their platform on what they're going to go down to. Like Noel said, we belong to MSBA, we belong to Rams, we belong to this, hopefully. All three of them are working on rural school problems, and they're doing their own lobbying down there. So legislators are hearing it from three different organizations, and it is a very positive outcome.
Okay, let's get in fold. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Meeting announcements, the next regular meeting will be Monday, October 13th, at 6:00 at the Rock Ridge Admin Building. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Westby.
Second.
Second by Bonner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Great meeting, everybody.